Call the meeting in order, call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Maloney.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here. I'd like to invite Troop 318 to, Boy Scout Troop 318, to stay the pledge of allegiance. So you can come on up here to the front.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to update tonight's agenda to move item 2025-074, insurance bid discussion only, to follow the approval of the meeting minutes.
Call the roll.
Did we have a second?
Second?
It was Trustee Maloney.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Rudin.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
First item is approval of the January 6, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting of January 6, 2025.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
As proposed, insurance bid discussion only.
So this is being brought forth just because of some things that have been going on in the village that we just, we have to defend. Once again, Jim Dodge has informed Orland Park team have released another video filled with baseless accusations. This latest attack goes beyond a personal smear, which kind of comes with politics. It represents a deeper and more concerning attempt to undermine the credibility of the village of Orland Park, its leadership, and the dedicated staff and businesses that are the backbone of our community. Left unchecked, these falsehoods threaten to erode the village's reputation and weaken the trust that our residents and businesses have in their local government. As mayor, I have a duty to protect the integrity of our village by ensuring that misinformation is confronted head-on, that the facts are clear, and that the truth is brought to light. I'm sure they will say that me responding to this allegations on the board floor is political, and no doubt, as has happened in the past, the usual suspects will file groundless claims with the state board of elections and write misleading news articles about it. However, these claims go beyond political rhetoric. They directly impact the village's reputation, its partnerships with businesses, and its ability to serve residents effectively. When they attack the village and a longstanding, homegrown, local company, I believe it's important to address these claims directly to protect the reputation of the village and our partners. Allowing this misinformation to stand unchallenged would harm the public interest and create confusion among those who rely on accurate information to make decisions about our community. Could you please show the video, which I think was first put out last Thursday?
Did you know that Keith Pico's board is costing you an extra $1 million every year due to a contract with one of their top campaign donors? Keith Pico and his trustees ignored a qualified bid that would have saved over $1 million every year, and they awarded the contract to one of their top political contributors. Pico and People Over Politics had a choice: a more affordable plan from IPPC or the more expensive Horton contract, the same coverage from the same provider. Pico's trustees chose the more expensive option, costing taxpayers over $1 million more every single year. And it's not just political contributions. Pico's consulting firm has a direct business relationship with Horton Group and was paid tens of thousands of dollars. Keith Pico claims to work for the taxpayers, but his actions tell a different story. Orland Park taxpayers deserve leadership they can trust, not politicians who reward their donors.
So they began this with a fabricated Excel sheet, superimposed on a Federal Election Commission webpage, to create the illusion of an official report. For accuracy, I encourage anyone to review, and everyone, to review my actual campaign report directly through the FEC. Notable on there, there is a disclaimer at the bottom saying, "The following is an illustration," which clearly admits the report they're showing is fictitious. Their incorrect use of Illinois State Board of Election on the FEC website is another way you can tell this is bogus. Misinformation like this has real consequences. It not only confuses residents, but also distracts from the important work we're doing as a village. Unfortunately, this is not the first time these taxes have been used. Four years ago, it appeared that I was accused of a crime on this very board floor about exactly four years ago, for an email, an email that was fabricated by Mike Henry and disseminated by Jerry Gorman. Some of you may recall that in their haste to try to smear me with a fake email, they messed up the date and day of the week. Two years ago, allegations were made against the village, the trustees, and me by Scott Casper and again Mike Henry, suggesting serious misconduct when they used a doctored photograph of this boardroom. They attempted to mislead the public by superimposing Pico for Congress on these two screens, creating the false impression that I was using village resources to campaign for Congress. However, the boardroom wasn't even open during the campaign and wasn't reopened with these new screens until two months after the campaign ended. Through this latest fabricated evidence, Dodge's team has perpetuated falsehoods regarding contributions from Horton Insurance. Here are the facts: federal law prohibits corporate donations in federal elections. While state law does allow it, Horton Insurance has never donated to me. Over the past eight years, I've received donations from three Horton employees. Those contributions were disclosed in compliance with all applicable laws. However, my predecessor did receive $10,500 from Horton Insurance, the company, while serving as mayor, and Jim Dodge himself accepted $2,500 from Horton Insurance, the company, conveniently listed under the name Horton in 2018. Horton has served as the Orland Parks Insurance Broker since 2003, long before I was elected, and they were established in 1971 here in Orland Park as a local business. During his 20-year tenure on the village board, Jim Dodge never voted against them, nor has any other trustee. Ironically, for transparency, I have consistently abstained from Horton-related votes due to a disclosed business relationship that predates my time as mayor. The video also misrepresents the village's exploration of alternative insurance options. The truth is, in July of 2022, village staff proposed exploring a pooled insurance program, IBPC, while retaining Horton as an advisor for the same fee Horton gets the same either way. Valid concerns were raised by the board. The first of which was that we are self-insured. This means we pay for our actual losses incurred. A proposal that comes in at almost $1 million with less than our actual losses appears too good to be true. Other concerns raised included the unsustainability of the premiums below actual losses, risks associated with other municipalities' losses when we would have become the deepest pockets in the pool, the impacts on union agreements and prescription coverage, and the lack of a request for proposal for a fair comparison. After further analysis, staff did not include the IBPC option in October of 2022, so we never had a choice, and ultimately abandoned it in March of 2023, presumably because some or all of the board's concerns were justified. This demonstrates the board's diligence in prioritizing the best interests of the village, contrary to Dodge's misleading claims. When misinformation is spread, it does not just harm individuals, it harms the credibility of the village as a whole. It also undermines our ability to maintain trust with our residents, to foster relationships with businesses, and to uphold the high standards of transparency and accountability that our community deserves. Dodge also revisited discredited claims from 2019, including the clandestine investigation Dodge and his ally Joe Lamargo conducted that ultimately completely exonerated me. Lamargo then filed the defamation suit against me and the village, only for it to be dismissed. Not only was the case dismissed, but Lamargo agreed to pay the village $30,000 to settle our counterclaim against him. The actions of Dodge and his Orland for All slate reveal a pattern of behavior that puts political gain above the well-being of our village. Let's talk about issues. By fabricating evidence and spreading false narratives, they risk undermining the progress we've made and creating unnecessary division among residents. This behavior is not just irresponsible, it's harmful to the very fabric of our community. Among his running mates are current and former Assistant Cook County State's Attorneys, who are complicit in these fabrications, potentially violating their professional oath and ethical standards. What is even more troubling is the continued attack on our local business community. They've targeted businesses like Horton Insurance, Edwards Realty, Kleinthorpe &amp; Jenkins, Fox's Pizza, Joe Rissa Ford, Ziegler Auto Group, and Ziegler Auto Group. Dodge and his team are not just engaging in political gamesmanship, they are jeopardizing the village's economic future. Businesses are vital to our community, providing jobs, resources, and services that benefit all of our residents. Sowing doubt about their integrity or partnerships with the village undermines their willingness to continue investing here. Such actions risk driving businesses away or discouraging them from setting up shop in Orland Park. It is unacceptable for anyone aspiring to represent our residents and businesses to attack them for exercising their First Amendment rights or holding different political views. Let me be clear: defending the village's political reputation, the village's reputation, and ensuring residents have accurate information is not political. It is necessary. The village of Orland Park will not stand by idly while its reputation is tarnished by baseless accusations and fabricated evidence. We owe it to our residents, our businesses, and our future to confront these attacks head-on, to set the record straight, and to ensure the truth is heard. Our commitment to transparency and integrity will not waver, and we will continue to build a stronger, more prosperous community together. The fact is, the village continues to thrive, despite the challenges of being in Cook County, Illinois, by fostering an environment where business can succeed. I am proud of this board's accomplishments, which include the creation of 5,000 jobs since 2016. We have also kept the mall vibrant, and it remains the top 1% mall in the country for traffic. The many new businesses we have added include Von Mauer, Rainbow Cone, Seasons 52, S2 Express, Tesla, Toro Construction, Graphic Image Corporation, Silver Cross, and just recently Portillo's. In addition, on February 5, the long-awaited Pete's Fresh Market will open. We remain committed to building a stronger, more prosperous community. Thank you. Does the board have any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I have two things. One, I think you're kind using the word misinformation, disinformation. I think it should be called something harsher. The second comment is, when I saw this ad, I went to look, I can still remember this vote that we took. It was just so obvious which way to vote. I mean, I'd vote the same way we did again today. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
So they are barking up the wrong tree by going after Horton. I know them well, I know a lot of people that work there. The service that they provide, just my experience over the last four years, the service they provide, the claims advocacy they provide, the background information for all of our policies. I've been involved in clicks with our firm before, I've defended them in school districts. When they get involved in these kind of cooperatives, it is nowhere near the service. And they're just wrong about the numbers in terms of what it costs, but what we get and the personal touch we get from Horton is, it's by far better than what we could ever get with one of these collectives.
I think their fee for health insurance is $35,000 a year, 35 or 37. And the total for that and property casualty is like 71 or 72, for essentially $8, $9 million worth of coverage that we get, that we self-insure. So, yes, they do a fantastic job. Any other comments? Okay, great.
Next on the agenda is a proclamation of Darvin Furniture and Mattress as Orland Park's Business of the Month for January 2025.
So now I get to do the fun stuff, which is to actually say thank you to a business, a business that's been here for a very long time, that I think most of us, how many of you on the board have gotten furniture at Darvin's? There you go. Everybody here is a customer.
Go anywhere.
So it's my pleasure to name them Business of the Month, something that we instituted, I don't know, about four or five years ago, we instituted Business of the Month, and there's a few months here and there we get so busy we miss, but we're very proud to have you here today. And I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas the village of Orland Park is proud to recognize outstanding local businesses that contribute to the community's economic growth, diversity, and vitality, and whereas Darvin Furniture and Mattress was opened by Louis Darvin after immigrating from Poland with his family in 1920. As Louis became a renowned furniture expert and as his customer base grew, his son David became his business partner. In the 1960s, Darvin quickly outgrew two locations and was adding on to their new location on Halsted Street, Chicago, and during expansion in the 1970s, David's sons Steve and Marty joined the business, becoming the third generation to own and run this successful business. A second location was opened in Matson, Illinois, and by 1980, they had planted roots in Orland Park. Over the 45 years Darvin has been located in Orland Park, they've gone through five expansions, making Chicagoland's largest furniture store and the top 100 furniture retailer in the nation. I think the biggest single store in Illinois, right, per sales. Whereas Darvin Furniture and Mattress has achieved impressive growth and success within its industry while maintaining its core values of integrity, customer focus, teamwork, and innovation, the village of Orland Park commends Darvin Furniture and Mattress on its dedication to their employees. Darvin made a major change in the business structure in 2019, becoming a 100% employee-owned business. In August 2024, they held their first ESOP vesting ceremony, and over 120 employees were recognized as 100% vested. Whereas Darvin has worked closely with the Orland Park mayor and local officials and has contributed generously to the betterment of the community through active involvement in local and nationwide charities, sponsorships, and events, demonstrating a commitment to making a positive impact far beyond their business operations. And now, therefore, I, Keith Pico, village president of the village of Orland Park, Illinois, and the counties of Cook and Will, do hereby extend the gratitude of the entire community to Darvin Furniture and Mattress for exceptional service to the community and hereby proclaim Monday, January 20, 2025, as Darvin Furniture and Mattress Day in the village of Orland Park. Congratulations. And I have this plaque to present, and then if you'd like to say any words, do we have the mic?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I don't want to miss an opportunity to say a few words here about Darvin, but you know, we're so happy to be part of this community, not just as a place you buy furniture, but you know, 250 of our employees live here in the area. And we just completed a huge renovation at the store, putting in our new marketplace, and also a coffee shop was a $4 million project just for the center of the store. So every year, we continue to invest in the Orland Park community as well. So we're so happy to have you guys as customers, and there's still about a week left in our grand opening sale, so. I'm told that we're the only place in the whole country where you can get 0% financing for 60 months right now, so, and you can come in and see our new store. Thank you.
And does anybody else have any comments to make before Darvin leaves? I know, they've always been fantastic to me, so it's a great store and fantastic part of Orland Park.
Agreed.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
They're going to be here till the end.
Okay. Next on the agenda is any non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment. Anyone who has, anyone wants to speak?
Anyone here want to speak? Okay.
In that case, we're on to accounts payable January 7, 2025 through January 20, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable January 7, 2025 through January 20, 2025, any amount of $6,347,275.19.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Next is our consent agenda.
Consent agenda, item A, payroll for January 3, 2025 approval. Item B, special event permit for Orland Park Area Chamber of Commerce networking event. Item C, old Orland corrugated metal pipe storm sewer. Item D, our storm sewer replacement, RFP 24069. Item D, 2025 CPAC slide preventive maintenance. Item E, facility air handling system cleaning civic center and FLC. Item F, vehicle and equipment VNE garage safety surfacing project. Item G, facility water system treatment and filter installation project. Item H, spoil removal services contract award. Item I, 2025 resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code Sidewalk Replacement Program. Item J, 2024 Facilities Preventive Maintenance Change Order Number Two. Item K, 2025 Wildlife Management Program. Item L, turf fertilization and weed control change order number one. Item M, 2025 Annual Athletic Floor Refinishing. Item N, agreement with Clark Hill PLC as needed legal services. Item O, March of Dimes 5K fundraiser. Item P, GG's Playhouse 5K fundraiser. Item Q, Toy Box Connection Community Health and Wellness Fair and Walk. Item R, Next Day Plus Multifunctional Printer Lease. Trustee Maloney.
Move to approve items A through R of the consent agenda.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Rudin.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Next item, Village Hall Emergency Escape Windows Alternate Proposal.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Radiszewski.
I move to approve the waiver of the competitive bid process and authorize the approval and execution of a vendor contract with Arlington Glass and Mirror Co. for Village Hall Emergency Escape Windows based on Arlington Glass and Mirror Company. Proposal dated January 9, 2025 for a cost of $65,860, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
In order...
Hold on a second. In case people are wondering about Village Hall Emergency Escape Windows, one of the things is this building was built in 89, and so there's certain code changes we have to change, and there's also security reasons for doing all of this, so we have to do those things for safety. And part of that is just because the building is older and changes need to be made.
Next, an ordinance annexing property 17151 South Wolf Road.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Annexing Property 17151 South Wolf Road Annexation.
Second.
And can we pull this up on... There we go, perfect. Oh, so this is one of our properties, and it's not annexed?
Yeah, so when we were doing our auditing of boundaries, we found that there were some parcels in town that we owned that were not annexed, very similar to the John Humphrey Woods or Wetman's that we annexed one pre a couple meetings ago. So there's another one.
But we purchased property, didn't bother to annex it whenever that was, because this wasn't purchased under my watch.
So hopefully tonight, it will be annexed and incorporated within the village.
Okay, I guess I don't have any other questions. Anybody have some questions?
We do a staff party to celebrate.
Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Text Amendment, Section 6-307 regarding signs.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Rudin.
I move to approve the Plan Commission Recommended Action, Case Number 2024-0952, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Amending the Land Development Code of the Village of Orland Park as amended Article 6, Section 6-307.
Second.
And could you just summarize what the changes are here?
Yeah, so our ordinance does not specifically currently allow for halo lighting, this is the backlighting. Somewhere along the line, there were some that were previously done prior to the change in the ordinance, and we've discovered some other ones that happened since. We're working on correcting that along with some restrictions. So basically, you can either backlight it or frontlight it, but not both. The backlighting has to be white, it still has to meet all the lighting requirements, so it can't be super bright. And then we're also making a minor change, just clarifying that when we have multiple businesses listed on one sign, that they all have to be in the same color palette, so one background color, one lettering color.
Okay. All right, great. Yeah, this is one of those catches that someone actually sent to me, and it's like, okay, there's all kinds of signs that look like this, and there's, so what's the issue? So we found it, and so it's good to point those things out, because the sign code is very, very complicated. And just to point out for all those people, there are no changes to political signs in this sign code thing they're having been for years. So, thank you very much. In fact, none of the other board members were here when it was changed, so just pointing that out. Any, anything else? Any other questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Zoning map amendment, 11300 151st Street, Lorenz Residence.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve the Plan Commission Recommended Action for Case Number 2024-0835, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Resoning Certain Real Estate from E1 Estate Residential to R3 Residential, 11300 151st Street.
Second.
And staff, could you just give us just a quick summary of it?
Can you pull the map up on this one? Go forward a couple. One more. There. Okay, this one probably can say without argument is a very peculiarly shaped lot. That little tail where the driveway has just recently got annexed into the village, this parcel's already been in the village, and when a lot of these parcels came in, they came in as E1. There were some improvements that were made on the building, and R3 is a more appropriate zoning, that's what's called out in the comp plan, and so we're just switching it from its annexed E1 to R3 is what the request is, and we're supporting of that.
Is this, is this the Gus property, or is it next to it? Yeah, I'm just trying to orient myself.
The little tail there, the driveway is Gus's driveway.
Yeah, okay, got it. Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I'm assuming the petitioner is not looking for a chicken coop in the future, because I know that that's a big distinction between E1 and R3.
No chicken coops.
Well, actually, they can do that in R3 as well, right? As long as it's the size of the property is big enough.
Yeah, I don't know the actual acreage of this one, but it is 1.2 acres.
So they could do one. Good. With limitations. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Schussler Park Renovation with V3 Construction Group Limited, Contract Extension, Change Order Number 16, and Contract Addendum D.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve and authorize the execution of Change Order Number 16 and Contract Addendum D to the current contract dated June 21, 2023 with V3 Construction Group Limited for the Schussler Park renovation project to extend the contract termination date from March 22, 2025 to March 22, 2028 for the completion of landscaping, maintenance, and monitoring services.
Second.
Wait a second.
Second.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. Any questions? Call a roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Redashewski.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
2025 Summer Program Lists from the Recreation and Parks Department.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
Move to approve Recreation and Parks Department and Veterans Commission Summer 2025 Program Offerings and Special Events and to authorize payment to each contractual vendor and/or instructor based upon the actual participation of each session at the resident rate and agreed upon percentage, and to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
And Ray, I'm assuming that this went in front of the rec advisory board?
No, this did not. We didn't have a meeting in January.
Oh, so you skipped your meeting? Okay. In the future, let's make sure we don't skip those meetings, and we make sure that they're, that we have them, so that we get their input. I mean, they've never really changed them in the past, so I wouldn't expect they would. I'm guessing you didn't have a quorum?
No, well, we didn't meet at all in January. There just wasn't an agenda.
Okay. All right, so not for this one, but for the future, let's make sure I know we need to get this passed, and I don't have any issues with any. Does anybody have any concerns or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
No, no concerns. Just want to begin by thanking Rec. and Parks Department staff and all involved in the effort and the time they dedicated to preparing the 2025 Summer Program List. I know it's a lot of effort, it's a lot to get through whenever these come through. It's clear tremendous amount of thought goes into curating a diverse programming to serve the residents of Orland Park, and your work is greatly appreciated. These programs play a vital role in bringing our community together and offering opportunities for recreation, learning, and connection. I did have one thought, Ray, and I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but, you know, with regard to low enrollment programs, definitely appreciated all the thoughtful justifications for continuing those programs with the lower enrollment. Like to know how we can do more in terms of outreach, marketing efforts, and the rest. If you have an easy answer tonight, go for it. If you don't, that's okay. Still want to look to see, is there more that we could be doing to help you with those programs?
And Ray, you want to give us just a brief overview?
Absolutely. So we do produce a brochure three occasions a year, and on such a cold night tonight, I'm happy to talk about the summer brochure, which contains all our summer programs and events. Includes the pool, Centennial Park West Concert Series, which we are currently working with an agent to find bands for, The Taste of Orland Park, which will be August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, the 4th of July, which we're going to expand a little bit this year. The 4th of July, we'll have two bands this year and a pet and bike parade, so we're going to have a little more community involvement at the 4th of July. We'll have three movies this year, so you'll see the titles of the movies. So a whole summer full of events, and that's just a part of it. So of course, we have Stellwagen Farm and all our other heritage site programs and events that'll take place for the youth in the room and those that are watching or their parents that are watching. We offer a huge variety of summer camps, so those camps can happen at the sportsplex. They're athletic-related, they're science-related, and all those kinds of programs will take place. We take a lot of pride in our swim lessons. We'll offer over 1,600 swim lessons during the summers, and we encourage children to participate in swim lessons. The number one reason that swim lessons are offered are for safety. Everybody loves to be in the pool, at a lake, or such, playing in the water to cool after in the summer, and it's critically important to participate in swim lessons. So that's just a quick snippet of our summer guide and some of the things that we'll be offering. Some of the new things are, this is a summary of all the special events besides the ones I mentioned, we'll also have the Veterans Golf Classic, which benefit Village Orland Park Veterans Organizations. That'll take place in August. Some of the programs that are new, you'll see listed there, so we have a whole host of programs at the sportsplex. Special Rec. will be offering a new program, Ice Cream Social for their population, and a number of recreation programs that we'll offer this summer. Some of the low enrollment programs that didn't have participation are listed here, so we eliminate those, but we are adding more programs than we're eliminating, so that's what you see here. So thanks for the opportunity to speak about those.
Board, have any other comments? I think the clerk wants to say something, Ray.
I just wanted to point out one thing that Ray didn't talk about, but as a former president and board member of the OYA for an awful long time, I got to know Ray and his staff very, very well. One of the things that he did mention is they do an absolute yeoman's work all summer long, keeping the baseball fields ready, scheduling the baseball fields, making sure that we can play when it's rained, making sure that the various organizations are, you know, are fairly treated and everything else. They don't actually run the baseball programs, which I think probably makes it a lot harder, because they've got to deal with a bunch of different organizations. But whenever we played here in Orland Park, even though some of our fields needed a lot of, needed to be rebuilt, the maintenance on them was always great, and people wanted to come here to play us, which was great for me, because I didn't want to go to them. And the Parks Department does a really great job, even though they don't run the baseball programs and softball programs, they do a great job for the kids who play in those programs.
Thank you, and I'll be sure to share that with our staff.
And I'll echo that. I was a coach for OYA in magic, baseball and basketball, and dealt with Ray back when he was in Kurt's job, I believe.
Yeah, I should specifically recognize Kurt, because Kurt really does a great job.
So Ray was in that job way back then, and so I've known Ray a very long time, probably, what, 20 some years?
Yes.
So you always have done a great job, so thank you. Call a roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Redashewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
amend Title VII, Chapter IV, number of Class B liquor licenses and ordinance.
Mr. Chairman. Trustee Malani.
Move to adopt an ordinance entitled An Ordnance Amending Title VII, Chapter IV of the Orland Park Municipal Code regarding the available number of Class B liquor licenses issued by the Village of Orland Park, Cookinwell Counties, Illinois.
Any questions or comments? Call a roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Redashewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecow.
Aye.
And just so you know, that one's for Pete's. So, yeah, so Pete's Fresh Market coming on February 5th.
That was the question I had. Any, any, any other non-scheduled citizens or visitors for public comment on items relevant to board business? Anyone want to speak?
Okay, and I just want to ask Mr. Solak, are you tired? You're yawning like crazy over there, making me want to yawn. Jeez. So, and I want to give a shout out to Boy Scout Troop 318. Thank you so much for. This, I'm sorry you didn't get to see this giant debate. What you'll find out in most functional boards around the area is that most of the solutions to the problems are pretty obvious and evident, and so there's not a whole lot of debate. Now, if you go back to 2017 and 2018, it may not necessarily have been that way. I wouldn't say we were as functional, but we also didn't have it on video, so you can't go back and look at it. But if you want to see something where you saw more discussion and more debate, the committee of the whole, our first agenda item, I think we had a pretty good debate and discussion with the petitioner, looking to put in a townhome, 90 townhomes. So there was good interaction with the board, and you'll see the board's opinion, and we sent it back to the planning commission, so you actually get to see us taking an action that maybe wasn't necessarily expected. With that, we move it to board comments. Start with Trustee Compass.
So I'd like to also thank the scout troop for not only coming out and braving the frigid cold to do the pledge of allegiance, but for staying. As Mayor Pecow said, we know this could be a long meeting, not always as exciting, but I think overall, today's been a great day, one filled with hope and purpose, even despite that frigid cold. Want to start by expressing my gratitude to our Public Works team with a shout out to our recently named Plows, Scoop Dog, and Clear Pathra. They've done an outstanding job keeping our roads safe and clear this season, and hopefully there aren't too many more snow days to come, although I'm hearing that there might be. Their hard work ensures that our community can keep moving forward no matter the challenges that winter throws our way. This day also gives us a chance to witness history with the presidential inauguration. The peaceful transition of power that defines our republic is a testament to our nation's enduring principles. I was grateful to have the day off today to watch this momentous event with my wife and daughter, and it's a moment to reflect on our shared hopes for the future. And on this also Martin Luther King Jr. Day, I am reminded of his wise words. We must learn to live together as brothers or perish together as fools. In times of division, his message calls us to set aside what divides us and focus on the shared values that bring us together. So as we begin 2025, let us embrace that spirit of unity and common purpose. Together, we can continue to make Orland Park a place where everyone thrives. Thank you for your dedication, your resilience, and your belief in our shared future. Let's make this one a year to remember. Thank you.
Trustee Malani.
I'd also like to thank Troop 318 for coming and doing the pledge allegiance, and also for staying, because this is some riveting conversation. I'm sure you guys will enjoy. But, you know, also got a brief introduction to political controversy, and, you know, obviously, for everybody else out there that's watching us, you know, there's people out there that are just going to never let, you know, the truth get in the way of a perfectly good story. So if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. So kind of keep that in mind as you're evaluating what you find out on Nextdoor, Facebook, and the various social media outlets. If you want the facts, come here and ask. One thing I wanted to touch on really quick is on Sunday, the Lady Owls basketball team earned gold at the Special Olympics Illinois Region B Female Basketball Tournament. So they'll be going to the Special Olympics Illinois State Basketball Tournament in March. So congratulations to them, and as always, thank you to all the volunteers and staff that make that program possible. Touches the life of many, so thank you for taking care of the participants. Thank you all, and have a great night.
Trustee Katsinas.
I too would like to say thank you to Troop 318 for coming, but more importantly, thank your sponsors. You know, your sponsors who help you, I don't know if you call them coaches, what's your role, coach, your? Leaders, sorry. Thank your leaders, because without them, you wouldn't have the troop. So thank your leaders that guide you in the right direction, and thank you for coming here tonight. And I'm sure you all were excited when we mentioned all the programs for the parks. And the cool thing is that we know summer is coming, although it doesn't feel like it now. And on that note, I wanted to remind people, if your heat goes out or you have issues with the cold temperatures, that the Orland Park Police Station is the warming center for the village. So keep that in mind, anyone you know, any senior, probably a good idea to check on people too, because it is going to be frigid cold tonight and tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Katsinas. Trustee Redashewski.
Thank you, Troop 318, for being here, and yeah, definitely hope everybody is staying warm. So cold out there. And also wanted to say congratulations to Darvin Furniture for Business of the Month, and knowing that they have the 0%, and I guess we're going to be going and buying some furniture for the next, the next few days. Thank you.
Trustee Healy.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. I have a lot to say, but tonight's not the night, I don't think, so I'll keep it brief.
I kept my comments short for you.
Wow, this is history. You are witnessing history.
I promise.